Ms. Sanyuk?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Knutson?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mrs. Blood?
Present.
Second item, Open Meetings Act is posted in the entry to the council chambers. Item number three, additional items. Three A, I do not see Dan Teal with Sarpy County Economic Development here yet, so move on to item number three B. Do we have OPPD representative here? See none?
Oh, really?
I move on to item number three C, City Administrator's Report. Mr. Berlowitz?
Well, I thought I had a little time to prepare just in case, but since nobody's here at this moment. As usual, I and/or staff would entertain any questions the council may have.
Are there any questions?
Really?
See none? Thank you. Are there any reports from committees? See none? Okay. Item number four, Review and Discussion Without Actions of Items on the Agenda of This Evening's Regular Council Meeting at 6:00 PM. Begin with item number three, Approval of the Minutes and Advisory Committee Reports. Approval of Agenda. Approval of Consent Agenda. Approval of the Minutes of the October 27th Regular and Precouncil Meeting. The Acknowledged Receipt of the Minutes of October 15, 2014, Board of Adjustment. Item number four, Approval of Claims. Item five, Special Presentation, This Evening Proclamation, November 15, 2014, as America Recycles Day. Oh. Ms. Sanyuk.
I'll ask this. I asked Jeff Roberts, but it's probably good for everybody to hear. I know we were talking about the Sarpy County landfill being full and capped off and having to haul our garbage to David City. And then, but then I heard now it's... Mr. Roberts, would you respond to that? How much more time do they think it'll be before they close that?
I believe it's two more years before they close it.
Okay. I didn't realize that. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Preister?
That was the plan up until just this summer, and then the county somehow was able to produce some additional space in the existing landfill. And so then they predict that they can go another two years. So we were told right up until into the summer that it was going to be closed and it was going to be shipped, and we were preparing for that. But at this point, the transfer station has already been built, and there was an article in the Leader and in the paper talking about some of the particulars of that.
Thank you. Item number six, Liquor License, Willow Springs Bottling Company. Seven, Ordinance for Adoption, Third Reading, Ordinance Number 3782. Seven B, Ordinance Number 3783. Item eight, Ordinance for Public Hearing, Second Reading, 8A, Ordinance Number 3785. Eight B, Ordinance 3786. Takes us to item number nine, Ordinance for Introduction, First Reading, Ordinance 9A, Ordinance Number 3787. Mr. Cook?
Quick question on waiving the three readings. Is there a reason for that? Is there an emergency or something going on here?
Mr. ...
I don't know if Jeff or...
No, it's nothing controversial. They are kind of anxious to get a, either a garage or shed built before the snow flies. So in order to get the shed built, they have to meet these setback requirements. That's why we're vacating this. But they want to get it moving before winter.
Thank you.
Nine B, Ordinance Number 3788. Mr. Cook?
Chris, real quick, I drove out there. Is this the land north, on the northeast corner of 48th and Raynor Boulevard? And would it be between Raynor Boulevard and the creek?
Yes.
And that's all developable?
Yes. Actually, when it was originally developed, you know, back as part of Ashford Hollow and as Twin Creek Estates before that, they did fill it, raised the elevation up so it's above floodplain level. Part of what is Lot 1 is still in the floodplain, and they don't plan on actually doing anything on there other than if it's approved and they have their landscaping business putting some landscaping materials back in that part that's still in the floodplain. But the rest of it is out of the floodplain.
Okay. Thank you.
Nine B, I think that's what we just did. Nine C, Ordinance Number 3789. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask Steve Carmichael if, in that amendment, since he had a concern, he would be more comfortable with the sentence that's on line 11, "All written requests will be forwarded to the City Administrator for review," and then there was a period, and leave out the rest of that sentence. So you don't have to answer now, or you can, but just a consideration, because I share some of your concern with that.
Mr... I'm going to have Mr. Sullivan say a few words first. Go ahead.
The provision in there in regard to sending it to the administrator is something very similar that I did with having it sent to the superintendent with the school district. And the reason for that is, we would get somebody on there that would say their agenda and item is the budget. Well, what about the budget? You want to... My agenda item is Hayworth Park. Well, what about Hayworth Park? And we were finding, to some extent, that some people were trying to, at least in my opinion, were trying to make it sufficiently vague that we wouldn't really be prepared or knew what was coming at us at that meeting. So the idea of sending it to the administrator is, well, if it's Hayworth Park, what is it about Hayworth Park? Be more specific so that we can get Parks Director in and be able to address that, as opposed to potentially bringing something up that we'd have to delay or not even give the speaker ample time or adequate answer, because we had no idea specifically what was coming up.
What I, and I agree, the administrator needs to have, just like anything we send, has to go through the administrator, has to be reviewed, and if there's a concern, it comes back to us from him, and he can speak to that. But Pat, the part I was suggesting doesn't necessarily deal with that component. The part that would be eliminated could still be done, but what would be eliminated is, and determination whether the request presents an issue that can be handled administratively. So it still would go through the administrator. Everything would be done. Dan could still check and see if somebody could administratively handle it. Maybe it's handled, and if Dan wanted, he could let him know. They may not show up then. But it's only that portion, and I think that's the, an area of concern.
That's my overriding...
Yeah. And I would concur. It doesn't not, that doesn't have to be stated in the ordinance by any means, because it's something that we normally as practice. That's the reason why I did provide you a copy of the council policy on agenda preparation, which is similar to what Pat says. We at least need it, whatever they're going to ask or indicate they want to speak on it, does need to be at least specific and clear enough for two reasons. For one thing, the city clerk has to know how to put it on the agenda. And if we get a rambling email or we're not sure potentially what the topic really is, and so we might, we might, we might say, phrase it other than how that individual wishes it to be, and so we'd be, might say, we wouldn't be on the same page in terms of preparing for it. As you can see, in the, in the policy, it says, you know, shall be written stating the specific issue or background. So it gives us something also to properly prepare. Currently, if it's something we can handle administratively, when we get something like that, whether it be even maybe a concern that's brought to us by a council member, we'll obviously try to determine, is this something we can resolve? And clearly, if we can't resolve, we won't even go that route. If we can, we'll try. So when it does come to council, we can at least report to you that we've taken certain steps to maybe deal with it, but maybe we weren't successful, or it didn't sufficiently satisfy that citizen's issue.
If the, if the request to speak before the council is clear and concise, and it deals exactly with what they want to speak about, I have no problem with that. I just don't want to put us into a situation where we limit the public's ability to talk if they choose to. But number one, limit them to what they want to speak about.
Yeah. And again, Councilman Carmichael, that would be the intent, just to make sure it's clear, not only for administration, but also as council members. So you know ahead of time, preparing on an individual basis, what you can lend to that conversation. So we can be as prepared as possible. It's not intended, nor would it be even currently, to intentionally screen out people's ability to come to the council and speak.
Ms. Sanyuk.
So Councilman Preister, you're saying that you would like to amend it so it reads, "All written requests will be forwarded to the City Administrator for review, period." Then strike and determination whether, et cetera, et cetera. Is that, that's what you're saying?
Just up through administratively. So the period would be after review on line 11, and we would strike and determination whether the request presents an issue that can be handled administratively.
Got it. Thank you.
And I think having the administrator assess it and the clerk is important, because the Open Meetings Act does require that everything be on the agenda in sufficient description so that a reasonable person would know exactly what they were speaking about. So to say Hayworth Park, to say the budget, wouldn't be enough. So I think the administrator does need to have the authority to ask them for more clarity if that's the case. Because if it doesn't meet the guidelines of the Open Meetings Act, then we're still in violation. That part, I just, I agree with Pat. I think we need to have it there.
Mr. Sullivan?
I think I understand what Councilman Carmichael's trying to say is, even though we may think that it's been administratively resolved, the person who wants to speak may not feel that it's administratively resolved. And if they want to stay on the agenda despite the fact that we think we got it taken care of, they should be entitled to do so.
That's correct, Ben.
So I think we can tailor that language a little bit, because I think you still want your administrator to see whether he can get it administratively resolved.
Right.
So let's try to, I'll try to find some language that we can cover the concern.
Thank you.
And I think any of those issues would be good to bring up so that we can discuss them in the public hearing, rather than after the public has spoken and then we start trying to amend or do things later. I just think that's why I wanted to at least offer and ask. So I appreciate that you raised the issue over the weekend.
Mr. Berlowitz?
Yeah. And to kind of reiterate what Pat said, again, it would be just to allow, if possible, to deal with it administratively. Clearly, as I said, we might feel we have a solution. The individual might not feel that satisfactory, and so it shouldn't be preempted for them to be able to come forward. It's just that, obviously, if we can resolve it without having it be brought before the council, not only does it save council time and energy, but hopefully it might avoid the necessity for a citizen to come to the council if we can, in fact, deal with it ahead of time.
Sanyuk.
There's no reason that we can't put this form on the website and have people submit it electronically, is there?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think that would be a good idea too.
Kathy, our intent would be to do that.
Okay.
We want to be as paperless as possible, and we also want to be as expedient as possible on both ends.
Okay. Good. Any other further discussion, questions? Moving on to item number 10, None, 11, None, 12, Current Business, 12A, Approve of Nominations. 12B, Approve of Application of Waivers of Hunting Regulations. C, Approval of Charge Point, Charging Station. D, Request Permission to Seek Bids. E, Acceptance of Grant Funding from the 2014 Storm Water Management Program. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to ask Jeff, I know that we use this for a number of things, including putting these little stickers on our storm inlets to remind people not to dump oil and other pollutants down them. Green Bellevue has done over 2,000 of these with our volunteers. I think you're still getting these through that program, and I think you still need some done. I don't remember the exact count. We had 5,000 or so when we started. I think it's down to roughly 2,000 storm inlets that still need to be done. So I'm assuming you could still use some volunteers, and if anybody's listening, any church groups, scout groups, anybody that wants to help, are you still...
Yeah, we could still do that. That kind of faded off in the background just a little bit these last couple of years, because the guy that was doing it left the city. And so, but we need to get that restarted back up again. I think we have several of those still in house yet.
Okay. And we'll keep helping. It just, after doing that many of them, people wanted to do some other things.
Right.
12F, F, Accept and Execute the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Funding. G, Approval and Ratification of the City of Bellevue and Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association. H, Approval and Ratification of the City of Bellevue Police Officers Association. Takes us back to our Precouncil Agenda. And is there anyone here yet from Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation? Thank you. Please come forward. I think Phil Davidson, do you have the laptop ready for Sarpy EDC?
Was there, I don't know if the file was loaded that was emailed?
I don't know. Phil will be able to help you.
Did you have it loaded? Okay. All right. Mayor Sanders, members of the council, thank you for your time. Sorry I was a little late. Dan Teal, President of Sarpy County EDC. I'll try and run through this fairly quickly once we get this up on the screen.